Good morning, welcome to the October 27th Tulare County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you'd please stand with me as we pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First two items of business today we have, I enjoy most of all, I'm gonna turn some time over to Supervisor Worthley to make a presentation to someone most deserving.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, it is a great privilege and honor for me to present on behalf of the Board a proclamation, and I'd like at this time to ask Mr. Moreno if he'd come join me in the well so we could make this presentation. Ray, I know this is a little bit, you know, coming down after being in Washington DC and in the presence of the President of the United States, but it is a great honor for us, this is a proclamation honoring Ray R. Moreno for his service to the United States Military. Whereas the Vietnam War or the Second Indochina War was a Cold War military conflict that occurred in Vietnam, Laos, and Cambodia from 1959 to April 1975. And whereas Ray Moreno joined the United States Army in 1969 after graduating from Morosi High School, after basic training, Ray was deployed to Vietnam where he served as a replacement soldier with the Alpha Unit of the 11th Armored Cavalry Division. And whereas a few weeks after landing in Vietnam, Ray and Alpha Troops rescued members of the Company C, 2nd Battalion, 8th Cavalry on March 26, 1970. And whereas, according to the President's, whereas 39 years after rescuing nearly 100 soldiers from the North Vietnamese, Ray and members of Alpha Unit were honored with the Presidential Unit Citation at the East Wing of the White House. And whereas, according to the Presidential Unit Citation, Troop A 11th Cavalry, Armory Cavalry's exemplary performance of duty is in keeping with the finest traditions of military service and reflects distinct credit upon the unit and the United States Army. And whereas, the Presidential Unit Citation is a senior unit award granted to military units for which, which have performed an extremely meritorious or heroic act usually in the face of an armed enemy. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Ray R. Moreno for his service to the United States Army. Signed Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpoel, Philip Cox, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Ray, congratulations to you, and I would also like to... Picture here. And I would also like to add that Ray is a Superintendent of District 4, our yard in Dinuba, he is a native, his wife here, Angie is here, Angie if you'd stand up and be And Ray is a native of Cutler, so he's a local guy through and through, and we just appreciate his service to our country and to our county. And Ray, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors for their recognition, and this means a lot to me, and this is for all veterans who did their jobs in all wars. Thank you.
I'd like to call up Gary Conkel at this time. We have another recognition to do, and recognition that I enjoy doing as well, to recognize a long-term employee of ours. Gary, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning, members of the board. This is a sad day for us and a happy day for Bill Appleby. Bill's the assistant, retiring assistant. He actually retired last Friday, and we had quite a party over at the lamplighter in recognition of that. I'll just, I'll just do a super quick run-through of Bill's career, which spans 36 years with the county of Tulare. He started in March of 73, he was six months as an extra help employee with a thing we call Comstock Milliebug Program, he goes spray trees all over Porterville. Then was hired full-time in September 73, served four years as either trainee Inspector One or Inspector Two out in the field doing whatever the district supervisor's asking him to do. In 1977, he became Inspector Three, which is the district supervisor level of inspector, was the Lindsay District Supervisor, Inspector for four years, and then in two, two years in the Visalia District, so he was Inspector Three for six years. He was an Ag Inspector Four then from 1983 to 85, and worked in the Quarantine and Fruit Inspection Divisions. Served 17 years as a deputy with our department. And those 17 years, he was four years as a vertebrate and weed and detection deputy, 12 years in pesticide use enforcement, and then one year again in the Quarantine and Fruit Inspection Division. And then I promoted him, one of the few good decisions I've ever made, promoted Bill to Assistant in 2002, so he served seven years as an Assistant Commissioner. And, and I'll just tell you that the guy, he has, he has a competency that, that I've never seen. I mean, he's one of those people that, you know, I said earlier, and being sort of funny, that this man must never retire, and look what he did. But, but he is one of the most competent people I know. We get really, for all the right reasons, really complex requests from the CAO, and I go in and ask Billy, you know, what are we gonna do? He said, "Well, I thought they might ask for that one day, so I went ahead and did it, and here you go," you know, and he just does that time and time and time again. His ability to anticipate requests and to satisfy them is freakish. Our whole glass ceiling program's multi-million dollar program, that was audited by some outside auditors, and not only did they not find any exceptions, we didn't think they would, but they, but when we asked them for suggestions, they couldn't come up with any way to make it any better, and that's a testament to Bill and how good he is and all that kind of thing. So I'm really sorry to see him go, it's hard for me to be serious, but I'm deadly serious when I want to thank you, Bill, for your excellent, excellent, excellent work, it could not have been any better. The guy's genius, that's all I can say. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. It's times like this that we... Time like this that most of us board members up here miss Supervisor Maples the most because he had, I think he gained the most pleasure of anything he did presenting the county seal to employees, so it gives me honor. Bill, if you would, meet me down here, I'd like to present you with the county's seal, which is the county's highest honor.
Well, it'd be very pleasure to present to you the seal of the county's authority, and I know you've always been there, because there's always so many things.
Yeah. I've gotten to know you, see the work product that you do, we're just amazed by the amount of work that you do, following through your path, and I hope I find someone to fill at least half of your shoes, so congratulations, and we look, and look forward to your retirement.
Thank you.
We're gonna expect you to say something too, I've just been stoned here. Someone would always always like to make a presentation, and after that, if you would say, we'd love to hear you say a few words.
Well, Bill, it's hard to follow Gary Conkel's quote, so I have to give you something really big to make up for it. On behalf of Assemblywoman Connie Conway, she had this resolution made up in your honor. As you know, she comes from the sport and has a deep respect for public service, and especially someone who stuck it out as long as you did, especially in agriculture, but we really do appreciate all your efforts helping Tulare County be really on top of the world in terms of ag production, and the testament to your work ethic and the things that you've done for this county speak for themselves, and I won't read all these wherethes, you can do that, a lot of them were already said by Gary, but on behalf of Connie Conway, thank you for your service. Congratulations.
All I have to say is, I want to thank the county for 36 years of gainful employment, and I'm looking forward to gainful retirement. Thank you.
If you've not noticed Supervisor Vanderpoel is not present, he is performing duties as a supervisor at a job fair this morning in one of the Tulare High Schools, and will be joining us very shortly, but he did call to let us know he was spending some time with the youth this morning, and should be here by 9:30. Our next item of business is public comments, anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on today's agenda, but under the board's preview, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will go to Board of Supervisors matters, Supervisor Ennis.
Yes, thank you. Yesterday afternoon, we had a Water Commission meeting, and during that meeting, Dick Schaefer, who is the Water Master for Success Dam, brought us up to speed on the meeting they'd had last Friday in Sacramento with Paul Ziano and Colonel Chapman. We still are gonna have to perform that independent survey, but thanks to Devin Nunes and Senator Feinstein, it's been put on the bill to go ahead and appropriate the money, to go ahead and buy the properties, and so that's on the President's desk at this time, and let's hope that he signs it. But this will, this will not slow down our project, because it's gonna be 14 to 16 months anyway to buy the property, 24 parcels, 14.2 million dollars, and that will buy the trailer park and the other parcels, plus it will move the existing Corps of Engineers office building up to where you enter into the lake at the top side of the, of the lake up on top, where it probably should be anyway. But the only problem being right now, we've got 4.2 million dollars appropriated, so we're gonna have to come up with another 10 million dollars from somewhere, maybe come out of the stimulus program, I don't know, but the project is moving forward, and I think that's good news for the people of southeastern Tulare County, especially the people with the residents here that have been kind of on hold for the last two or three years, so. Project is moving forward, the completion date now is set for 2015, and I think Nick Schaefer yesterday said, "I just, I wonder if I'm gonna live long enough to see this thing completed," so. It was great to hear those, that news, and I think the people of the Porterville area are very excited about it. Thank you.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last week Supervisor Vanderpoel and Worthley and myself attended the San Joaquin Valley Partnership Meeting, and in fact, we attended two meetings, one on Thursday and one on Friday, and the reason we were there is to discuss the topic of water. Out of that Thursday meeting, the partnership agreed to pass a resolution supporting some type of water bond, that would include storage, conservation, above-ground storage, below-ground storage, and it's basically a very basic type of resolution saying that we need to solve our water problem. It's very evident that the state of California is working very hard to put a bill out hopefully this week, and we can review the bill, and to see what kind of progress they've made. A very difficult subject is water, because we have competing interests, we have competing regional interests, we have competing stakeholder interest. I believe that to have a comprehensive water bill, it has to address all the issues that are facing California on this subject. We can't look at it as a San Joaquin Valley issue, a Delta issue, or a Bay Area issue, or Metropolitan Water District, we have to look at a solution as a whole. But I think slowly we're getting there, the bill that's coming up, that'll probably come to vote shortly, includes a provision about groundwater monitoring, which is the major concern of all of the entities in, all the stakeholders in this water crisis. So, we're not sure if this bill is really passable in a bond form, but at least we're working somewhat to find a solution. So, in the middle of next month, some of us supervisors will be meeting and try to formulate how we can go ahead with a statewide comprehensive water plan, in case this plan does not pass. And even if it does go to the voters, we intend to, to go forward to formulate a statewide water policy. It's easier for us to do it because we're nonpartisan, so we don't have all the partisan issues, so that's all I have to report to.
Thank you Supervisor Worthley.
Well first, I wanted to say congratulations to Bill personally on his retirement, and I wondered if that has something to do with our, his boss's retirement, imminent retirement too, the fact that he was leaving, and so he felt it was a good time to get out of Dodge, but we're gonna be missing two very prominent county, you know, people here very soon, and that's, that's our loss, and I'm sure it's your personal gain, so congratulations, Bill, and I hope you do have a great, great retirement. Think about part-time work, it's really healthy. This Friday, I'll be in Sacramento for a Commission on State Mandates meeting, one of the topics there will be a review of an audit that was done of the commission, and the findings are not real surprising. We are, we are dealing with issues that are four and five years old before the commission, and efforts have been made to try to streamline the process, but there's some thought that maybe the state doesn't really want to streamline the process, because it just means they would owe much more money much faster than they really want to pay. So, that's the process that we, that we get to suffer through on Friday, is the audit and a few things. So, other than that, the meeting in Fresno, as was mentioned by Supervisor Ashida, it was, I think, pertinent and worthy of note that, you know, our counties of the San Joaquin Valley represent everything, of course, from the extreme south and arid south, Kern County, up to, including San Joaquin, and our interest in water have not always been aligned the same. And there was some thought that we would never be able to come to a resolution and agree on anything, but in fact, the resolution that was passed came out of the San Joaquin Valley Association's meeting, when the eight counties recognized they actually have far more in common than they have apart, and so rather than focusing on those differences, the focus is on the things we agree upon, and that was the resolution that was passed by the partnership. So, I think it speaks well to the purpose of the San Joaquin Association, and our need to continue to work together, because as a unit, we can accomplish so much more than we can ever accomplish individually. Thanks.
Supervisor Cox?
Yes.
I forgot something.
Okay, I guess we'll let you.
We have a very important meeting in Exeter Thursday, I believe it's at 4:30. This meeting is about the widening of Spruce Avenue, and anyone who owns property along Spruce or south of, between Lindsay, 137, the continuation is 65, all the way to 198, should attend that meeting, it's at the Exeter Memorial Building. Now, I want you to visualize that if we do it to county standards to make a highway, a four-lane highway, our footprint will at least double the existing roadway that we have. If we go to a state footprint, which is similar to the road between Lindsay and Porterville, it will at least triple, and maybe four times the size of the street is today. So it's extremely important for people who use that road and people who have property along Spruce to attend that meeting. Thank you.
Four times, that's... I'm visually driving down that road, I'm seeing all the houses across the east side there. Well, Bill, you didn't get to take your shoes off for long, and I was just handed a note that Marilyn Kenashita's already been hired to fill your shoes, and so it didn't, it didn't take long, I don't think we replaced you, but we found someone to, to try. I just wanted to take a moment, I don't really have anything happening in my district, you know, to, to mention, but I want to thank the board, if, if you folks will think back to a few years ago when Supervisor Ashida and I came on the board, we came with things we wanted to see done, and I want to thank this board for how diversified we are. If you listen to the things that they were talking about, each board member here is very dedicated to, to this job, to the people we represent, to the issues of the county. As, as I watch Supervisor Worthley travel to Sacramento more in, in two months than I do in a year, you know, it's appreciated the way he represents us on the boards that he does at the state level. Supervisor Ashida and Ennis taking the charge on water in the county, which has freed my time up to work with one of my passions, and that is trying to provide programming and to get youth out of gangs and out of violence. We have a very diversified board, I think we work very well together, we're oftentimes of one mind, where we like to see things get accomplished and work well together, and so I want to thank this board for the way we work, you know, it's really never shoved off, well, you have to do that, or you have to do this. The board members attack the duties with zeal, and it's, it's exciting to see how things get done in the county with, with this board at the helm, and so I just wanted them to know, and the public know, how much I appreciate that. Also, this year's been a rough year for my family, health-wise, and their willingness to at times pick up the slack for me has been appreciated as I deal with health issues in my family, so I just wanted to share that with, with you and with the board, and let you know my appreciation and how much I enjoy working on, on this board and seeing the things that we get accomplished. Okay, with that, we will move to our consent calendar, items 24 and 26 are going to be pulled and heard at a separate date. Supervisors, are there any other items that need to be pulled for separate consideration? Anyone from the public like to pull an item? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for consent calendar.
Group of approval, Mr. Chairman, of items 8 through 33, absent 24 and 26.
Second. Moved by Worthley, second by Ennis, cash of votes, unanimous? Thank you. We have time to do an untimed item, item 34 is off agenda today, and that will be, that will come back at another time. Like to go to item 35, a request from Resource Management Agency to review and accept the Quea River Management Plan update. Mr. Raper.
Chairman and Board Supervisors, this is an update of the Quea River Management Plan 2009 update. As the board knows that the Quea River Management Plan was adopted in 1997 and amended in 2000, the plan restricts the number of commercial river license to eight companies that would have a maximum of eight rafts and a maximum of 64 people per trip along the Quea River. All eight companies that have historically received the commercial license were approved in 2009. As the result of the analysis of 2009, no reportable incidents occurred during that period of time. RMA staff is recommending the board to accept the review of the Quea River Management Plan, and also authorize eight rafting companies that were issued commercial river licenses in the calendar year 2009 to maintain their status and be offered the opportunity to apply for a 2010 commercial river rafting license. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to respond.
Any questions, Board Supervisor Worthley?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Raper, I did notice that there were some who did not utilize their...
Pull.
Their, their opportunity to do this at all last year, I, are we, are we to assume that they have expressed an interest still in continuing forward, even though they did not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I realize it wasn't the best of water years, so it probably had a lot to do with the amount of utilization, and probably the lack of complaints there. I can remember when this was a very, very contentious issue when I first came on the board, setting up the whole plan and dealing with irate neighbors, because it was, before we had the plan, people would just trespass on private properties, and there was a lot of issues and problems, so I would say this has been a very successful plan, and the fact it's very quiet speaks well to its utilization, it's worked very well.
And, and I, I would concur, the staff has reported, again, as reflected in the staff report, and no reportable instances, there's some minor issues that were investigated, but all in all, I think also the, the existing commercial operators understand the value that they have with a limited number of license being permitted, and so they're very much willing to abide by what the rules and regulations are as well.
Any other questions? We entertain a motion.
For approval.
Moved by Ennis, second by Ashida. Unanimous, thank you. We'll take up item 36, Williamson Act, county-initiated full non-renewal forms for county-initiated non-renewal of substandard parcels.
Supervisor Cox, I need to recuse myself.
Supervisor Ashida will recuse himself.
I'm getting lost.
Should've just stayed there.
Chairman, members of the board, as you know that the board has authorized RMA staff to begin cancellation of substandard, substandard contracted lands under the Williamson Act contract, what we're asking here to, is authorize the chairman, chairman to sign the Williamson Act full non-renewal forms of the county-initiated non-renewal of substandard parcels, and require that copies of the notices of non-renewal be delivered to the chairman, and that the personal signature of the chairman be certified and acknowledged by the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, and filed in the office of the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. In this instance, what we're looking at doing is doing a facsimile signature to be recognized by the clerk of the board, and that would be recorded once the notice of non-renewals are completed. For just the board's information, all the notices of non-renewal were mailed out on Monday, and so we're doing the next phase by completing all the non-renewal forms that will be recorded by, by RMA staff. Any questions of staff?
Any questions?
How many notices were sent out, Mr. Raper?
343, and that's a combination of single property owners, or legal owners, as well as a combination of legal owners as well.
Any other questions? We entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved by Ennis, second by Worthley. Unanimous Supervisor Ashida having to recuse himself and Supervisor... Unanimous. Supervisor Ashida having to recuse himself and Supervisor Vanderpool not present.
Mr. Chairman, while this matter is before us as an item, something has come to, been brought to my attention that affects the Williamson Act. I thought it might be appropriate if I just might raise it this moment while Supervisor Ashida is, is not here on the dais. You, the board will recall that we had implemented an interim procedure whereby, if there was any kind of discretionary land use act that affected Williamson Act contracts, that we required people to sign, applicants to sign an agreement that essentially said that in the event that we were no longer going to be funded by the State of California, a subvention that the county at its discretion could determine the contracts to be null and void. We did that with the factual situation at that time of having had a 10% reduction and looking forward at, at continued reductions. The proposed budget was an additional 20% reduction. We did not anticipate that, that the state was going to set, immediately, the government's going to blue pencil that and eventually essentially just get rid of the subvention this year. Supposedly, it may be temporary, and in light of that, we have not taken any kind of formal action on all of our Williamson Act contracts, instead choosing to go after the substandard parcels that we just did this morning. In the meantime, life goes on, and properties are being bought and sold. And, and I'm aware of a situation, which I assume is not rare, of a lot line adjustment that's being required in the course of a, of a real estate transaction that is being held up by RMA in trying to deal with this particular issue. And I just think that it's something we need to, it's not, it's not an action item today. We cannot take any action on it, but I just want to bring it to the board's attention that, that the factual situation that we were dealing with at the time we took that action has now changed. And, and the question is, do we need to review that again? And I, I think that we should, in light of the current situation, perhaps the idea of saying that we'll put this in abeyance for a period of time, or we will, we will agree that we will not take action for a period of time based upon the situation being in flux as it is. Because essentially right now, what we're asking is anybody who has to go through a discretionary act on real property involving Williamson Act is they're basically signing an agreement that says, "I no longer have a Williamson Act contract." That was not what was contemplated at the time when we implemented this policy. So if the board would agree, I'd like to have this matter set for an action item really as quickly as possible so that we can address this matter, because I know it does, it is affecting real estate transactions right now.
Jake, how long would it take you to put together a, an action item on this and bring it to the board?
What's the, well, what's our next available board date? Is it?
Wanna?
And do we have one on the 17th?
No.
Okay. Well, it would be February, November 10th then.
November 10th then, okay. So we'd ask that you bring that as a...
Basically, as I understand it, the staff report would be to review the previous policies of the board and look at some options for the board to, one, to potentially suspend that requirement until we work through our Williamson Act program. Okay, very good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item 37, the Williamson Act Subvention Report.
Chairman, members of the board, staff is recommending and requesting the board to approve the 2009-2010 Williamson Act Subvention Report. It's an annual report to the Department of Conservation. We're also asking and recommending that the board authorize the chairman to sign the 2009-2010 Williamson Act Subvention Report. And we're also recommending and requesting that the board authorize the chairman to sign future Williamson Act Subvention Reports in future years without coming back to the board. It's an annual report that is required to the State of California Department of Conservation. Attached is the portion of the subvention report, and additional information is being generated by GIS that would be submitted along with the signed report by the chairman of the board. If you have any questions, be happy to respond.
Any questions?
Group of approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved by Worley, second by Inis. Unanimous. Thank you. If we can get Mr. Ashida back in here. We'll now move to our first public hearing, a public hearing, item number five, request from auditor, controller, tax collector, and six other names to deny appeal by, by Jeffrey and Diana Glass regarding transient occupancy, occupancy tax. Just so that you'll know, my favorite thing, a stack of papers right as we begin the hearing. Yes.
Good morning, Supervisor Ashida. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Thank you very much for hearing our appeal before you this morning. Is this the right chronology here? Okay. The county is asking us to pay $6,928 in back transient occupancy taxes, interest, and penalties as of July of this year for taxes on a rental in our private home, which we never collected from guests because we had been told by the county on repeated occasions that it did not apply to us because we were not a hotel.
Let me, let me go ahead and stop you and open the public hearing. So the public hearing is open, so this testimony will be official. Public hearing's open. Continue, please. Caught me off, off guard.
My husband and I dispute the foundation of county staff's claim that we are a hotel and should pay a TOT, or transient occupancy tax. Based on our Article 11, transient occupancy tax, it defines rental properties which are not hotels and are exempt from collecting TOTs. It states, "Hotel," in quotes, "does not include a private home, which is rented by a person who is not regularly engaged in the business of renting such facilities and does so only occasionally and incidentally to their own use." Our home is a total of 1,000 square feet, which includes a 400-square-foot second bedroom slash office. When we rent this space, we literally have to move our personal belongings out and cram it into the remaining 600 square feet of our home. And this is a private home, which we rent occasionally and incidentally to our own use. Many dates are blocked out so that we don't receive rentals at all. County staff, after meeting with them, appealing it, and, and meeting with them on several occasions, presenting our tax returns, presenting all of our records, got back to us and stated that they rejected our appeal based really on three things that had nothing to do with TOT articles. First, county staff, in their rejection of our appeal, chose to look up the words occasionally and incidentally in the dictionary to support their position. First of all, they rejected our appeal based on two subjective word definitions they found in a dictionary rather than to find support in county ordinances where definitions should be spelled out. I looked the same words up in the dictionary and found different definitions. Take your picks. County staff rejected our appeal, or excuse me, county staff dictionary defines incidentally as occurring by chance and without intention. My American Heritage Dictionary defines it as minor or subordinate. That's exactly what it is for us. It is minor and subordinate and incidental to our other incomes, incidental to our life. County staff's dictionary definition defines occasionally as from time to time. Yes, that's exactly what we do. We rent our home from time to time, occasionally, and therefore should be exempt. Second, county staff has arbitrarily decided that by advertising and using our vacation rental as an income tax deduction, we are showing intent. Yes, our intent is to rent our property occasionally and incidentally. We really, this is our private home. I'm not in the hotel business. The statute says, "by a person not regularly engaged in the business of renting such facilities." We are not in that business. We are not hoteliers. This is in our private home. I am not regularly engaged in the hotel business. I'm a real estate agent. Renting our home is a minor accompaniment to our life, and renting a room in our home is subordinate to my real estate career. Yes, we maintain a website with the purpose of renting our private home on occasion. Third, county staff has rejected our appeal based on an IRS definition of minimal rental. County staff is implying that because the IRS requires landlords to pay income taxes on any rental over 15 days a year, that in Tulare County, if you rent a room for more than 15 days, you need to pay TOT. We've paid our taxes. We declared all of the income. They have reviewed our tax returns. We have been always forthcoming with information and are above board. This is not a Tulare County ordinance, and additionally, we paid our taxes. There have been additional other things that, that have happened along the course of this. Zoning ordinance, I'm in real estate, and I know the zoning ordinances. Zoning ordinance number 352 defines a hotel as where there are six or more guest rooms. It continues, other ordinance at, at the county say that if you have two rental units or less at any residentially zoned property, you can do that without having to have any special zoning change or, or a variance on, on your zoning, which then would allow you to have more, and that they determine you are not a hotel if you have two or under. I networked with almost every B&amp;B and every homeowner in Three Rivers over the last week to, to confirm their understanding of that. And repeatedly, people have said that when they have gone to the county, have gone to, to zoning to see if they could rent a room in their home, they have been told that if it's under two units, you did not have to comply with hotel motel regulations. I personally met with Cheryl Kates in July of '04 and reviewed the TOT article. Transient occupancy tax definition was told that in a private home, we were exempt from TOT. I have been networking with other people in the community, have also met with county representatives, and have been told the same thing. Two other instances are being represented here on our behalf today. And Kathleen Selickman will come up and read a couple of representations of that when I'm finished. We also spoke to our attorney, Matt Bixler, and he said that there are several other people being represented by his firm who have also apparently been misled by the county regarding TOT. We do not think we are a hotel. The county staff has confirmed repeatedly that situations like this in Three Rivers are not a hotel. We did our due diligence and now are being retroactively assessed for taxes, interest, and penalties to the tune of almost $7,000 that we were previously told that we did not need to collect. We ask the Board of Supervisors to understand our position and support our appeal. Thank you very much.
I want to have our staff do their presentation next, and then we'll, and then we'll hear the others that have come, okay?
All right.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Hiale Wallace. I'm the Chief Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector. We're here today to discuss transient occupancy tax, which is covered in our ordinance code. Oh, wait a second. I have one of these things here. Which is covered in our ordinance code, Part 1, Chapter 5, Article 11. Transient occupancy tax is commonly referred to as TOT. TOT is a 10% of the rent charged by the operator and is paid on dwellings used by transient guests. The tax is collected from the guest. TOT covers a structure or any portion of intended for the occupancy by transient. A transient is a person or persons who exercise occupancy of a dwelling for 30 days or less. TOT is required to be charged and collected by the operator and paid to the tax collector on a quarterly basis. That ordinance states hotels does not include a private home, vacation cabin, or similar facility which is rented by a person who is not regularly engaged in a business of renting such facility and does so occasionally and incidentally to his or own use thereof. And now I'm going to present a timeline of how this came about. Crystal Cove was discovered during a routine review of TOT locations in the county. Around June 24th, Nikki Agola, a deputy tax collector, phoned Jeffrey Glass requesting TOT information and quarterly returns. The tax collector then received a letter from Jeffrey Glass, co-owner, dated June 24th, 2009. Owner stated that he was unaware of the need to collect the tax. The owner had checked with the county in 2004 and was told that there were no requirements when renting less than two rooms. Owner requested a waiver of penalties and interest. Owner also stated they were only renting, they only started renting in 2006. Tax collector did receive their quarterly returns at this point, but no TOT taxes were collected. The tax collector then sent our response to the owner's letter dated July 15th, 2009. In the letter, we stated the tax collector was unable to, to grant requests for waivers. The tax collector requested the owner to show all records pertaining to the rental for the last five years per Tulare County Ordinance 1-05-1440. The owner had 10 days to set up an appointment and review the documents. A call was received, oh, sorry. A call was received by the tax collector's office, and a hearing was set for August 4th. The hearing was attended by Jeffrey and Diana Glass, the owners, and Hiale Wallace, and Vern McDonald, representing the tax collector. At the hearing, additional information was provided by the owners. The owner stated that they rented out one room of their personal residence. This room includes a small kitchen, private bath, queen bed, TV table, and a direct access to a deck. The owner did not rent until 2006 due to the neighbor's home under construction. Prior to 2006, the rooms was used only by friends and real estate clients who stayed at homes, at the owner's homes and wrote in the guest book. Owner stated that they received, reserved the website for Crystal Cove to show owners, friends, and family their progress as they renovated the property. Again, the owner stated that they talked to the tax collector's office about the tax in 2004 and inquired if the, it applied to their property. It is unclear what that conversation was on our side. The property was rented for the following days. 2006, 37 nights. 2007, 89 nights. And 2008, 106 nights. Here's some photos from the web, and there's additional photos in your, in your packet. Owner supplied a copy of the assessor map showing their property location and a copy of the portion of the county TOT ordinance referencing this tax collector's staff who they spoke with in 2004. Okay, then during the tax collector's hearing, Vern McDonald reviewed the owner's personal profit, income tax, I'm sorry, personal income tax return. No copies were made on the request of the owner. Reviewed above-mentioned documents owner provided, told the owners the tax collector would have a formal determination within 10 days. Informed Mr. and Mrs. Glass, the tax collector is not authorized to waive penalties and interest, and they would need to go to the board. On August 12th, 2009, the tax collector sent a hearing determination letter. Included in the letter, the tax collector believes that Crystal Cove is an ongoing... Included in the letter, the tax collector believes that Crystal Cove is an ongoing concern. Transient occupancy tax does apply to the property. Advertising on the web depicts intent. Taking it as an income tax deduction also shows intent. Tax collector agreed to the 2006 start date. The tax collector admitted that during 2004, when asked, the property was not a going concern, but that changed in 2006. The tax collector does not agree that the property is only rented occasionally or incidentally. Okay, and we do believe occasionally is defined as the time, as time to time, and incidentally is defined as occurring merely by chance or without intention. And the Internal Revenue Code does state that 15 days a year is considered their minimal rental. And by advertising on a rental website and using it as an income tax deduction, Mr. and Mrs. Glass are showing intent. I then attached a calculation of the TOT, including the penalties and interest for the quarterly TOT returns completed, based on the quarterly TOT returns completed by the owners. Advised owners they had 15 days to pay, attached a copy of the TOT ordinance and noted Section 1-05-1435 for the appeals. To date, no TOT payments have been made. On August 18th, 2009, the Board of Supervisors received a request for this appeal. Okay, additional information to consider. Diana and Jeffrey Glass previously owned Sequoia Cabins rental property, also located in Three Rivers. In August of 2003, the tax collector requested the TOT for this property. In August of 2004, the tax collector received a letter from Diana Glass. In this letter, owner stated that they had contacted the tax collector in 2001 about additional taxes and were told if fewer than two units, no taxes would be applicable. After receiving a request for TOT in August of 2003, they inquired about the above statement and were told taxes were due. Owner requested a waiver for penalties and interest and a payment plan. They also included their TOT returns, but no payment was received, and the TOT returns totaled over $15,000. This letter, in our opinion, this letter clearly shows that Mrs. Glass was aware of TOT requirements. According to the tax collector's research, no additional action was taken on the taxes and no taxes were paid on Sequoia cabins. To date, no taxes have been collected for the Crystal Cove. The tax collector respectfully requests a decision in favor of penalties and interest. Total due currently is $6,986. Payment is to be immediately due and payable upon the service of the Board of Supervisor decision or additional penalties and interest will be charged. If payment plan is requested by the owner, an agreement will be sent to them for their signature with payment schedule and a tax lien will be filed. Interest will again be applied until balance is paid in full. Any questions?
I see, let's go back to Exhibit G. I see that the forms were prepared for the other properties, Sequoia cabins. And you say that none of those TOTs were ever paid?
Not to my knowledge. That was a different reign, so to speak. We have no record of it.
You have no record of?
And is there an opportunity for me to respond to that?
There will be.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question if you're -- Is there anything in our definition about, in our transient occupancy tax that defines the words where we, occasional and incidental?
No, sir.
Is there any incorporation by reference to the IRS codes language?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For your Board's information. If there is --
Am I on?
You're on, you just pull the mic over there.
For your Board's information and for the listeners.
Take your mics now off.
For the third time. For your Board's information, if there is no specific definition included in the ordinance code, words are to be interpreted according to their ordinary and normal use.
Okay, thank you. You have anything else to present? Okay, Ms. Glass, go ahead.
When we owned Paradise Canyon cabins, when we first started that property, we went into the county and got a business license. And we spoke with the, with the powers that be at that time. All county planning and offices were in the location over here. And we met with several people at that time and were absolutely told that we were in compliance. We got our business license, we did everything that we needed. And at that time, we were told that we did not have to comply with any county regulations if it was two units or fewer.
Can I ask you a quick question? Say you got a business license. Who did you get that business license from?
Tulare County.
Okay, that's interesting. Go ahead.
And, and we incorporated to limit our liability on the property for having guests. And we're told that we did not have to comply with any hotel motel regulations. When we were contacted and told that we did need to, we were shocked that we needed to. We went through the whole process that we have just gone through now. And it made sense that we possibly should be paying the TOT. We had been told we didn't need to at the time that we started, but we had no problem with paying that, but not in retro, I mean, not retroactively since we had been assured that we didn't need to. The final determination, I believe, on the Paradise Canyon appeal was September 13th of '04. We got the final letter that said that we needed to pay that. Then we went through a process much the same that we went through this time, where we came down and met with county staff. I looked up all of my records and could not find out, I mean, this is more than five years ago. I went through everything to try and find out who exactly we met with. I remember Cheryl Kates, because I have her name written down on some of the things that I have for Paradise Canyon, I mean, excuse me, for Crystal Cove. So we met with them and they said that we did not need, because of the confusion over this, we did not need to pay the TOT retroactively back through that years, but that we needed to start paying from that point forward. I told them at that time that we were already in escrow on the sale of Sequoia cabins. We actually closed escrow October 1st. We did not pay any transient occupancy taxes. We were told we didn't need to pay that. We advised the new people that they would need to begin to pay that TOT. I checked with my bookkeeper, who actually worked for them for a while after they purchased the property. And they did run it as a vacation rental for a time. And it's my understanding from her that they, they did comply with that when they first ran the business and then they shut it down. At that time, that is when I actually sat down and said, "We have since moved into a private home and we plan to rent a room in this private home. It's 400 square feet, it's part of our house. If we do rent that, do we need to pay it? We understand the Paradise Canyon may need to pay it, but do we? This is now a room in our private home and it will be rented occasionally and incidentally." And I remember kind of laughing with this, with the person that we spoke with, saying, "Okay, we've got that one clear. We understand that, now we understand this. Okay, we're clear." Now, this has surfaced. I mean, the Paradise Canyon issue is dead and gone. We did understand that we needed to pay that. They allowed us to not pay in the rears, but that does not change the picture of Crystal Cove, which is in our private home, rented occasionally and incidentally by someone who is not in the business of renting rooms.
Can I ask you a question? Do you really consider 89 and 106 days a year, which is every third day, as occasionally and incidentally?
Well, you know, the first year at about a, gosh, what was it? I think I gave the percentage to her, but maybe like 9% or something like that, was, was occasional and incidental. As it has grown, we block out an awful lot of dates, all of the holidays. We block out most of the time in the winter. We only take one reservation a week in the summer if we in fact do take reservations for those times. It has grown to be a little bit more and we have welcomed it. I'm in real estate and the real estate business has certainly gone down and thank goodness, we have been renting this room. And maybe to the percentage, it becomes a little bit more than occasional and incidental and we'll give you that. However, the definition of in your private home by someone who is not in the business and occasionally and incidentally, I think still pertains to all of us who have a home, I mean, a room that we rent in our own home. We are very different than hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts. We're very different than a second home, where someone lives in LA and they rent their second home as a vacation rental. And a lot of other instances, there are just a handful of us that actually rent a room in our own home, in our private residence. And I think that those people are exempt from being hotels. The county zoning says a hotel is more than six rooms. You know, if in fact you determine that we are a hotel, which is curious in the first place because of the way that it reads, but if you determine we are, it needs clearer definition, just like legal counsel was saying, that if you, if it does not state it, that you accept the common understanding. Well, incidentally, according to the county staff's, or rather occasionally by the county staff says from time to time, or, no, you're right, incidentally, occurring by chance or without intention. That's very different in intent than, than what my dictionary says, minor or subordinate. It is minor or subordinate to us, but it is not occurring by chance and without intention. So it really depends on what definition you look for in the dictionary. We looked up on the web too and found five or six other definitions, none of which said occurring by chance or without intention. Of course, it's not by chance and without intention. We have a website, we hope to rent it some. But, you know, it has turned out to be more. And if you want us to pay TOT in the future and determine that we are a hotel, we will. But we have been clearly told that we didn't have to. And I have Kathleen Seligman today, who is one of the other people in this small group that rents a home in her own, rents a room in her own residence, that would like to speak on our behalf today. And she represents another person as well. That'll just take a moment, but it'll show the kind of thing that we go through when we go to the county and get conflicting responses. And if it's determined that we need to do it, we have no problem with it. We pay our taxes, we are big supporters of Three Rivers and Tulare County and have no objection to paying what's fair, but we have just been not given a clear message.
So if I can ask Kathleen Seligman to bump and read on our behalf, I'd appreciate it.
If you can please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kathleen Seligman. I am a resident of Three Rivers. I live up on Upper South Fork. And thank you very much, Supervisors, for hearing this case and allowing me to speak on behalf of the Glasses. I have two letters. The first letter that I'm going to read is from a woman who also lives in Three Rivers.
Can you give us a copy of that as well when you're finished?
Do you want the copies right? I also have, you have copies for the Supervisors?
Whatever you have copies of, if you can, give them to Clerk, we'd like to have those.
Would Supervisors like individual copies?
If you can give her individual copies, that would be great.
Also, I have individual copies of the letter that I would like to read that was written by myself and my husband, James Seligman. So, we have five. There might be more than eight, so I can. So, the first letter that I would like to read is from Christine Pitts. And the letter reads as follows. "To the Board of Supervisors. This letter is in support of Jeffrey and Diana Glass' appeal regarding transient occupancy taxes. In the spring of 2009, I made the decision to make my home available for rental from June through September. With the death of my husband and the bottom falling out of the economy, I was experiencing financial challenges. The treehouse, as I named it, is my home. When it is rented, I leave and have to find somewhere else to stay. Prior to renting, I carefully read the county ordinance and concluded that my home was not a quote-unquote hotel as defined in the ordinance code. In addition, I spoke with several individuals who also occasionally rent their homes. Based on these conversations, it is clear that the county established a standard regarding our unique status by determining that no taxes were due. It has always been my intention to comply with all county ordinances and regulations that are applicable to my circumstances. The county tax assessor has recently claimed that I owe transient occupancy taxes. I am in strong disagreement with the county staff's new interpretation of the ordinance. Prior to renting my home, I performed due diligence and acted in good faith upon the information I collected. Based on the current ordinance code, I request a decision from the Board of Supervisors that my domicile does not qualify as a hotel." This is signed by Christine Pitts. The next, the next letter I'd like to read was written by myself and my husband, James Seligman.
Ms. Seligman, did you sign all copies of these?
I did.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't have the original, so, the only original.
Dear Board of Supervisors, on July 20th of this year, we received a letter from Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector of Tulare County requesting that we register our personal home and residence pursuant to the Tulare County Ordinance Code, Section 1-05-1345. Enclosed with this request were tax statements based on the assumption that we are a hotel and subject to the transient occupancy tax and have then since we completed construction of our new home at the beginning of 2007. When we built the Sequoia Cottage, as we now call it, our intent was to use the new home for ourselves along with family and friends who come to visit. Due to a series of unexpected events, we needed to consider the possibility of temporarily and occasionally making the new structure available for rent to supplement our income. After speaking with several real estate brokers, we concluded that we would only be able to continue using our home if we rented it out part-time as a vacation rental rather than as full-time lease. As soon as we completed construction in December of 2006, we contacted the assessor's office and described our vacation rental idea in detail and asked if we would be subject to any county regulations and zoning requirements. We were informed at that time that we did not fall under the description of a hotel and did not need to register with the county. We were certainly willing to do so if we had been advised at the time. To verify this, we also got copies of the ordinance and zoning laws and understood even better why we were being advised in this way. The language in the ordinance and zoning clearly excludes people like us from the transient occupancy tax and it seems quite fair and reasonable that families in situations like ours should be excluded. Nevertheless, when the assessor visited us in person on May 14th of 2007 for the new construction reassessment of our property, we mentioned our vacation rental plans again and we were given the same answer that we received over the phone five months earlier. Then, on December 20th, we were given the same answer that we received over the phone Then, on December eighth of 2008, the assessor's office contacted us by telephone. Once again, we described the nature of our rentals and our business, and we were again assured that we did not need to register with the county. Our cottage is a single unit and our home. It is not a second home, a multi-unit structure, a bed and breakfast, a motel, and it is certainly not a hotel by any stretch of the imagination or the definition in both the county ordinance and zoning laws. We are now aware of two other situations that share very similar circumstances to ours and would like the Board of Supervisors to clarify once and for all the intention of the ordinance and the language used to define a hotel. Please consider our unique situation and relieve us of these extremely burdensome and unfair demands from the assessor-tax collector. If the supervisor, supervisors feel that individual families who occasionally and incidentally rent our space in their private, in their private homes to augment their financial situations should register as hotels and therefore collect taxes on behalf of the county, then we would ask that you amend the language of the existing ordinance to express this intention. Thank you very much. Is there any questions that you have?
I have two, I guess it would be for Ms. Glass, two quick questions. Sounds like you were told by the Resource Management Agency and the assessor that you're not a hotel. The person that actually determines that is our tax collector. So everything I've heard so far is telling me that you've been told by other county agencies, not the agency that actually makes the determination whether or not you're a hotel. Uh, you can tell me if I'm wrong, you can tell me if you've talked to someone in the tax collector's office, but so far, everything you've said, it sounds like Resource Management Agency, our zoning, our, uh, the people in that agency, as well as the assessor, which has nothing to do with, uh, the tax collector determining, uh, taxes due on rental properties. And have you ever rented a house at the coast?
Ever, me?
Have you ever rented a house at the coast?
No.
I have, there's a, there's a, people rent their homes out there, and there's a, a TOT tax on that home. So I, I'm, so I just wanted to see, ask you, have you been told by someone in the tax collector's office who's the organization?
It was my understanding that these were, these phone calls were from the tax assessor, particularly the phone call on December of 2008, it was the tax assessor that called us, and it was the conversation that we had at that time that was indicated once again very clearly that we did not fall under the, the regulations of a TOT.
And as well, I think I had a conversation with Cheryl Cates, who is part of the tax assessor's office at the time of our appeal for Paradise Canyon.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify something that the chairman is asking, is the tax assessor is not in the same office as the tax collector. They're two different offices.
Right.
They're, they're two different agencies. When you say "assessor," has nothing to do with the agency that's here today.
Well, the, um, the agency that's here today is the one that I met with when reading the actual, uh, hotel is not a personal residence or private residence rented by occasionally and incidentally. I mean, that was the determination at that time by that, that, that made the determination at Paradise Canyon.
Okay. Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm looking at ninety and one hundred and six days as not occasionally and incidentally. I, I don't know why you keep saying those words, because every third day is, is not occasionally and incidentally, in my opinion.
Less, um, less than a third of the year is occasionally and incidentally.
Okay. Did you have anyone else that, that would like to speak?
I, I would like to say that the person that we spoke to in December of 2008 was Nikki Ariola, and she, I believe, is from your department, right? So I think you're, um, you're wrong in your assessment that, that we were not, we were not, we did not speak to the ta- the county tax collector. Um, there probably is some confusion, and we'd have to go back in our notes exactly from which department, but I do know, in fact, that in December of 2008, um, it was the town, the tax collector's office that we spoke to. Um, and again, confirmed, so, um, that, that is what, that's my presentation. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to address the board on this?
To your point of occasionally and incidentally and my numbers, um, you know, I think that, so that it is not a, an arbitrary decision of what number is occasionally and incidentally, that's one of the things that highly tried to, to clarify, was the IRS says fifteen days is, is minimal rental. Um, you know, I think that what she was groping for was a definition of occasional and incidental, what does that really mean, and what is minimal, and what's minimal for the IRS to charge rental income on a property, and what is occasional and incidental. Seems like it needs, if they're going to be giving me those measurements now, saying your interpretation is that, that those number of days do not mean occasional and incidental, we need to have some sort of a guideline of where does it then become more than that, and where, where do we start paying that tax? Because we are in a private home, and it is incidental to our life.
I understand what you're saying. Thank you. Anything, any other questions, board members? Any other comments from the public? Any response? Hiley?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to emphasize that transient occupancy tax is paid by the rentor, not the rentees, or, I mean, by the, uh, rentee, so, um, you know, it's not a burden on the property owner. Additionally, um, you know, while, um, I agree that this room is in our house, it is a separate floor, and it is a separate living area with bath and a kitchen, or a ki- small kitchen and a private entrance. Um, and additionally, the hotel in our, um, in our transient occupancy tax does state that, um, that any portion thereof, so, you know, even though they could be living in part of it, a portion thereof is being used as a rental. Um, so, you know, I have spoke with all the people that you received letters from today personally, and have explained to them my views of transient occupancy tax. And, um, you know, we've been going around and around, and this was set, so we were waiting for the determination of the board.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Please, your name and reg- and address.
I'm Jeffrey Glass, Diana Glass' husband. Um, you know, we don't have a sign, we don't have a, uh, uh, it's, it's not a place of business. It started small, we didn't know what it was going to develop into. Uh, we, we were thankful that we had the chance to rent this with, with our income being what it is. Uh, I, I think the, the main thing is just that we're being told one thing by the county, we think we're complying. They asked us to collect, we, we never collected these taxes from these guests. If, if we would have collected them, we'd be happy to pay, but now they're asking us to pay the taxes of people who, from whom we've never collected, and, um, it's very burdensome. If, if you say that we're a hotel, and you come and done this new study, and, because this came down all of a sudden, I mean, it was, this, they just dropped into us. We've been honest in our, we've, we've replied quickly, we want to get this over and done with, but, um, it, it's just very unfair to ask us to pay taxes when we were told that it wasn't necessary, and then on top of that, to pay interest, and then on top of that, to pay penalties. Uh, it's almost fifteen hundred dollars in penalties, and, and for, for what seems to be just an ill-conceived, uh, way of communicating to us that this needed to be done. So we're kind of asking for your mercy on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, supervisors.
No one else comment? Close the public hearing, we're going to adjourn to closed session. Did you have this item set for closed session, item A? We'll be back in just a few minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it is item A on your board's closed session.
That's what I just said.
Sorry.
Well, before we start, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, put it on the record that I will not be voting on this item, because I did, uh, come late to the presentation, so I didn't get to hear the whole thing. So my vote, I will not be casting a vote during this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I need to disclose that I've talked to several of the residents in Three Rivers about this issue, that, uh, it's been a continuing issue for, for the last sixty days. Uh, that did not, does not sway my opinion. Uh, I will move to uphold the appeal.
Mr. Chairman, I would second the, the motion, and, uh, what I, what I wanted to say to the, the appelleurs and to the staff is that I think, uh, both of you have reasonable expectations or reasonable, uh, explanations of your interpretation of the, of the ordinance. The problem is that when we start charging taxes, it needs to be clearer than that, and that we need to have a more closely defined, uh, concept of what does it mean to be occasional and, um, what was the other term?
Incidental.
Incidental. Uh, so that, I, I think the position taken by the appelleurs is, is very reasonable. I think the staff's position is reasonable. The problem is, we don't have a defined definition in the ordinance code, and in my mind, until we have that, there is no tax due. Um, and so I believe that the appropriate thing for staff would be to go out and find, as was pointed out by Supervisor Cox, I know that when I go and rent a house over in Cayucus, transit taxes are charged and paid. Uh, so other counties have ordinances that, that must define this in a way that everybody understands what we're talking about. So it's clear, uh, when the tax kicks in, when it does not apply, and there should no, should not be any guesswork on this. So, uh, that's why I support the motion.
So moved by Ashida, seconded by Worley, to grant the applicant's appeal. Cast your votes. It is four in favor of Supervisor Vanderpool not voting. Thank you. Hope you, staff, hope you have clear direction. Our next item is number six, a public hearing for consideration of resolution approving issuance of bonds in principal amount not to exceed four million dollars by the California Finance Authority for the benefit of Ventura Coastal LLC.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Martin Meyer, Deputy CAO Budget. This public hearing before you today is for consideration of a resolution moving issuance of tax-free bonds not to exceed four million dollars by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of Ventura Coastal, a Tulare County private firm. The California Municipal Finance Authority is a joint powers authority of which the county is a member. This authority wants to issue tax-exempt revenue bonds and loan the bond proceeds to Ventura Coastal, an established business in the county, which will use the funds for a project to finance or refinance equipment to manufacture fruit juice products. Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code requires that an order for the interest on a private activity bond to be tax-exempt. A governmental entity with elected representatives that has jurisdiction over the area where the bond proceeds will be used must conduct a public hearing so members of the public can comment on the project. Since the California Municipal Finance Authority's Board of Directors is not elected, it is requesting that your board hold this public hearing and approve the authority's issuance of the tax-exempt bonds. The authority is a public entity, separate and apart from its members, and so its debts, liabilities, and obligations are not applicable to the county. The county will have no direct or indirect financial liability whatsoever from the issuance of the bonds. Now, in return for the board's approval of the issuance, the Ventura Coastal project will enhance economic development within the county by improving the ability to produce the, the fruit juice with the newer, and, or refinanced equipment. In addition, the California Municipal Finance Authority proposes that twenty-five percent of the issuance fee would be contributed by the authority to the county, and a similar amount would be donated to a nonprofit organization within the county, and it would be up to the county to figure out exactly where these donations and contributions would be used. It should also be noted that your board approved a similar bond issuance for Visaya Coastal in 2007. I believe there's a representative of the California Municipal Finance Authority and Ventura Coastal in the audience that can answer any specific questions that your board may have regarding this request. If you have any general questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Questions, the board? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Before we vote, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I almost said, "Audience, please arise," as Assemblywoman Conway walked in the door. I'd like to welcome her into our meeting today. That was my first reaction, is "All arise." Uh, the board, if I may, before we vote, uh, the two things that, uh, that they are offering are the, uh, you know, the, uh, contribution of, uh, the funds to the county, and I would, uh, like the board to consider the, uh, the nonprofit to be the museum foundation, the newly formed museum foundation, and the county funds to be towards the Step Up Anti-Gang Fund. That's a, just a plant in your, in your ears, so, seeing that, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would be glad to move this, approval of this, this item, these folks operate up in my district, I'm proud to say, and, uh, it's always great when we can increase our productivity and make better use of our products and have value added and provide additional jobs, so, well done.
Second to that motion. Okay, motion by Worley, seconded by Vanderpool. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item is number seven, also a public hearing. This is a continued public hearing that is still open. Mr. Fussell?
Good morning, board. Britt Fussell, Assistant Director of the Resource Management Agency, and this is a continuation of the hearing regarding a resolution of necessity for the Road 80 widening project. This is to acquire property from Mr. Sophia. Um, staff is recommending this morning that this, uh, hearing be continued until November tenth. We are currently taking a look at some possible options for consideration, and, um, we need to process those through our own staff as well as the City of Dinuba before proceeding. So with that, staff would recommend continuing to November tenth.
Continuing to November tenth. Uh, this is a public hearing that has remained open. Is there anybody here that is, wishes to address the board? I must disclose, Mr. Sophia did contact me last, last week, requested a meeting that I did deny, so I've not met with him and told him I would not be able to meet with him.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to move this continuance. I would ask staff, Britt, uh, just a point of clarification, I, I know that the residents that the gentleman is desirable, desiring to keep, uh, in this process has had a fire.
That's correct.
And so you're aware of that, I just wanted to make sure you were, I want to make, we'd be aware of what, uh, the intentions were of the property owner might bear, I think, in our ultimate disposition.
Discovered that yesterday.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. By Worley, seconded by Ennis. Unanimous, thank you. Next item is item number thirty-eight. General Plan Initiation Request by Family Healthcare Network and Self-Help Enterprises.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and supervisors. Jason Laboue, RMA Planner III. Today I'm here to talk about a General Plan Initiation Application, GPI-09-003, and it's for the applicant's Family Healthcare Network and Self-Help Enterprises in the Goshen area. and Self-Help Enterprises in the Goshen area. And your board may be familiar with this site from previous general plan and zone change and other projects. The request before your board today is to approve the application, GPI 09003, and that would allow the applicant to proceed forward with a general plan amendment to change the land use and zoning on APN 075170031 in Northeast Goshen. The proposed land use change would be from residential to community commercial, and the proposed zone change would be from R1, single-family residential, to PO, professional office for the medical facility, and C1 for the neighborhood commercial. Again, the project is located in Northeast Goshen. This is the tentative subdivision map that was previously, has previously gone before your board. And the site is the remainder parcel to the north of the project. The project site, as shown and submitted by the applicant, shows the clinic to the left and the two commercial buildings to the right. The project map, and it's kind of hard to read on here, but it shows the zoning, and to the north is AE 40, and to the south is R1, existing R1 and residential development. An aerial shows the site. It currently shows it as agricultural and vacant, but this is aerials from October of 2007, and existing development is occurring. The findings of the staff research indicate that the site is inside the Goshen urban development boundary, and as well, it's inside the Visalia urban area boundary. The project is not under Williamson Act contract per the cancellation application approved by your board, PAC 07004. Under the Goshen community plan, there was a designated strip of commercial along Avenue 308 to northeast, in Northeast Goshen. And that is just at the bottom of the larger parcel, under the Road 72. That would be 308. The site is designated as residential currently and under the current Goshen community plan. And in response to the different comments received by interested agencies, conditions would be addressed through the general plan amendment process. And not included in your packet, Caltrans District 6 has not submitted a letter yet, but they intend to do it this week in regards to the traffic impact study that was previously done. It was only done for the residential development. I got a phone call on Thursday, so they'll be submitting that, and that'll be included as part of the general plan amendment process. A summary of the findings today is that the proposed change of land use designation and zoning would benefit the community of Goshen, and it would be consistent with both existing general plan policy and draft update policy. This would provide commercial services and the ability for the Family Healthcare Network to relocate its clinic from where it's currently located closer to 99 over to this site, and it would be able to expand in the future. Alternatives before your board, as listed in the agenda item, would be to deny the initiation, and that would not allow the applicant to apply for a land use change and rezoning application. Refer to the Planning Commission. This would be an extra step, but this will go through with the general plan amendment process. Or your board could deny the application and recommend that the applicant wait for the Goshen community plan update, but this project has been on hold for several years. Again, your requested, the request of your board today is to approve the application to proceed with the general plan amendment and approve GPI 09003. Thank you, Board.
Any questions, staff? Seeing none, is anybody wishing to speak to this item?
Applicants are here today.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Board of Supervisors. My name is Harry Foster. I reside at 5929 West Buena Vista Court in Visalia. I serve as the President and CEO at Family Healthcare Network, and we would appreciate your consideration in this matter. We're available for any questions you might have.
Good morning, supervisors. Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Evans, and I work for Self-Help Enterprises. Our address is 8445 West Ellowin Court. And I'm also here today to answer any questions that you may have and ask for your support for this development.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I must disclose, I met with these folks sometime back when they were proposing this project, and that does not influence my decision here today, and I move approval.
Seconded by Worley, seconded by Ennis, who is a little bit quicker, and Supervisor Ashida today. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our last item of business today is a bid opening that occurred. You have the tabulations in front of you, all of which were lower than our engineer's estimate. Was there anybody wishing to speak to that? Seeing none, I know we have reason for a closed session, including addendum item number H.
Yes, sir, we do. We have already done Item A, Items B, A, I'm sorry, J on your board's closed session and addenda. I do anticipate an announcement.
We'll adjourn to closed session.